I'm gonna be out here by myself again today.
Karen, bitch.
I hear Karen down there, which, put Marvin down there.
You want us to space out a little bit? Camera.
Camera.
Cause they were presenting today.
I ain't gonna present, where the, where the thing at?
Lauren.
Oh, the screen is right there.
He giving, he giving us a presentation, we gonna see the consulting side.
Evening.
I'm excited. Put a little color on it herself, look.
I would say, why is it so dark? I mean, but geez, the, the gold ain't shit. Well, originally I was at green and gold. And then.
Only he mentions it all the time.
In the class, hey.
Hey, Miss Wick.
Huh?
Did you survey?
Yes, I did my survey. Some of the answers. Yes, I did my survey. Some of the answers. Some of my answers weren't real. What God is saying to their family. My answers weren't real. What God is saying to their family.
Ah, yes. Ah, yes.
Okay.
Don't see square. I'm gonna put helmets on right here.
Alright.
I'll put Marvin on up there. You done got promoted.
I already know you. Yes, that was Marvin and I's fault. We apologize in advance.
I mean, I don't, I don't seem like this.
Right, look, I know how I feel about him to see.
I'm saying.
I like these patterns, I like the height of the shoe first. This must be your chocolate.
Oh, I see Sarah walking. I got my own internet too.
Your nameplate fell over.
How you doing, Miss Kidd? I'm alright, how you doing, Miss Karen?
Let me know where all you. There's my cell phone. I'm sat around like that, I'm sat around.
How are you, Doctor? You cut your hair? Did you cut your hair?
Everybody ready?
Yeah, that's right.
I now call to order this July fifteenth board meeting, Madam Treasurer, may we have a roll call?
President Goodwin.
Here.
Dr. Bailey.
National experience. So, we're going to start with a special recognition from our, for our treasurer, I'm excited about this, if everybody can join us down so we can celebrate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Award puts your district in a very, some entities total, entities total, and only less than four percent are even eligible for this award. The Otter State Award is presented to local governments and school districts that meet the completion of a financial audit that meet the following criteria. I'm gonna read the audit that meet the following criteria. I'm gonna read the criteria real quick, cause I know, let these people, criteria real quick, cause I know, let these people know what it takes for you guys to make this happen. They will know what it takes for you guys to make this happen. The N D must file financial report for, the N D must file financial report for the Otter State's office by the statutory due date without extension on a GAAP accounting basis, and prepare an annual comprehensive financial report. It may not contain, the report may not contain any findings for recovery, materials, the report may not contain any findings for recovery, material citations or material weakness, have no other financial concerns. This award, it represents, award, it represents the hard work of all the Dayton City Schools employees here. And all the financial staff who make an effort each day to attain accounting excellence. I want to recognize the Board of Education, the Superintendent, and everybody that have done an outstanding job watching over every dollar here at the Dayton City School District. I specifically want to recognize Hewitt Abraha, your treasurer.
Grievances under a labor agreement disciplinary action involving employee or student, ongoing labor negotiations, concerns or matter.
It's your mic on, Chris.
It's all. It is inappropriate to address any matter involving pending disputes grievances under a labor agreement disciplinary actions involving an employee or a student, ongoing labor negotiations, concerns or matters that have already been settled, and or any matter which because of its nature is deemed appropriate to be discussed in executive session. Mr. Walker, will you serve as our time keeper? Go ahead, Madam Treasurer.
Randy. Ready. Brandy, ready. Brandy.
Alright, our next speaker.
Okay. Tanisha Horton. Tanisha Horton.
And please say your name and address before you get started.
My name and address?
Yes.
My name is Tanisha Horton, and my address is twenty-two, twenty-two Stan Hope Avenue.
Thank you, go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Goodwin, Dr. Bailey, and distinguished members of the board. My name is Tanisha Horton, and I stand before you today disheartened fighting to reclaim a job that I love, and I'm still unsure why I've been denied. February twenty-twenty-five, I resigned from my position as a bus driver due to pregnancy complications, with every intention of returning to the district I care about deeply. I reapplied on April tenth and was informed by Doc, Mr. Craig Anderson that there were a few steps to complete, but I will soon receive an offer letter. However, on July ninth, two thousand twenty-five, Mr. Anderson called brought unexpected news, I was ineligible for rehire. When I asked for an explanation, I was told it couldn't be shared, that's why I'm here this evening. I like to highlight my ten-year tenure as a bus driver with A and public schools. I had no write-ups, no disciplinary actions, and I provided a two-week notice upon my departure. I followed the proper procedures and I am left wondering why I'm not eligible for rehire. This isn't just about a job for me, it's about a passion to serve. I take pride in ensuring children arrive at school safely and and on time. I enjoy my work and the people I collaborate with. Most importantly, I'm committed to the students and I believe they deserve dedicated professionals like myself. I respectfully request that you consider my situation and provide clarity on why I'm not eligible for rehire. I'm eager to continue serving this district and its students. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Stefan Watts. Stefan Watts.
Around the release time policy. This policy is already in place and has been adopted November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. And because this policy is already in place, here at Lifewise, we would like the opportunity to be in this space as a collaborative partnership serving DPS under the Ohio law, not just as a release time religious instruction program, but also as a way to serve our community together. Lifewise Academy is fully committed to providing Bible education to public school students during school hours, following release time religious instruction guidelines upheld by the U.S. Supreme Court. While our methods and strategies will evolve, our vision to reach students during public schools through the gospel through a replica release time program is settled. Focusing exclusively on release time allows us to be highly effective on our mission. This approach is not just strategic, but it's what the parents want for their children. Release time offers a unique opportunity to reach students that might otherwise attend before and after school programs due to various restrictions such as transportation, extracurricular activities, and parents' work schedules. We're committed to doing one thing and doing it well. Offer Bible school education to schools, to students during school day. This course ensures that we stay true to our vision and avoid the risk of mission drift. We are more than welcome and open for, to, to release any of our policies or anything that the board would like to see. We want to do this as something together to reach the students that are in our public schools and in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regina Hawkins. Regina Hawkins.
The past two and a half years, the past two and a half years, it's been nothing but a joy this past couple of years. Until this past recent year. I recently went on maternity leave due to having my youngest set of twins, Makaria and Markelle. I had them July eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, which was also during the summer non-school days. I worked the entire year while I was carrying my babies, not just one, but two. During the heat, the cold, the rainy days, even the snow. I showed up every single day. I wobbled through the parking lot, all the way up to thirty-six weeks pregnant. Once again, I carrying one child, but two of them. As you most know, that's definitely a high-risk situation, but I made sure I did what was best for my kids. As I was asked by former employees on a daily, why are you still here? Why are you still working? Aren't you tired? I showed up and showed out for my job. I did what I needed to do, cause I knew once my children arrived, I knew I would need a time off with them. I worked every field trip that was possible. I picked up every child that was left behind, because that was my job. I was told that no child is left behind. I did just that, fast forward January, two thousand twenty-five, to be exact. I was told I had to resign from my job due to my maternity extension ending, or I would be fired. I didn't, I wanted to lose my job. I made sure I did everything, each precaution that I was supposed to do, to make sure I was able to return. This job was not just a job. This job was perfect for me and my children. I'm off doing the winter breaks along with my children, summer breaks included. I chose this job for my kids. During this time, while being off on maternity leave, I suffered from postpartum depression. No one knew besides my doctor and I, and my mom. I asked for another extension, but there was nothing that no one could do. As I was told, if I resigned from my job, I was able to come back within two years, as long as I did the proper things I was supposed to do. I was told that I would not lose my seniority, I would come back with my same position and pay. I was told I left on a good status and that I could have my job back. Three months later, I got myself together. Here comes April, I beat the stages of postpartum, the hardest months ever. I was back and ready, like I never left, so I thought.
If you want to wrap up your final comments.
Yes, I will. I was told to give me another week, another week, weeks turned into months, July eighth, two days shy before my twins' first birthday, I received a call from Craig Anderson saying that I would no longer be able to receive my job back. I asked, was there a reason? There was no reason why. I was told that the district, it was a district ride decision from the board. So I come forth today to ask why I'm not able to have my job. I've never been suspended. I've never been nothing, I've never had a write-up or anything. So I come back to you guys to see if I'm able to have my job. After being off on maternity leave, I feel like I'm being discriminated of having my children. I've done nothing wrong to this company, but be great. So if you guys can take that in consideration as a single mother, I would love to have my job back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Jones. Michelle Jones. Serena Murphy.
Hello, good afternoon to the President and the board members. My name is Serena Murphy, and I stay at thirteen twenty-seven Kingsley Avenue in Dayton, Ohio. I wanted to come forth and address a concern I have about DPS transportation rehire process. First, I, I want to start off by saying I am a former bus driver of Dayton Public Schools. I worked with DPS from February two thousand fourteen to August two thousand twenty-two, which gives me eight years' experience with DPS, but overall, I have eleven years' experience overall. My main concern with DPS transportation, like I said, was the hiring process. So on Thursday, July tenth, two thousand twenty-five, I had an interview with Mr. Anderson. And at the end of the interview, Mr. Anderson basically told me to look out for the hire on email that would be sent out to me no later than Monday, July fifteenth. And it, and he also told me if I didn't receive the email by then to give him a call. So this morning, which is, um, July sixteenth, I ended up giving him a call um, this morning, because I did not receive the email. Mr. Anderson basically proceeded to let me know that they weren't, they decided not to continue on with the rehire process. I asked him what was the reason, and he couldn't really give me one. So that brought up major concern for me on how does the rehiring process goes, especially when you have a overall well-qualified professional driver here and ready to work. Um, you know, DPS always is looking for bus drivers all the time, so I just don't understand why, if you have a qualified driver that has the experience um, to actually come to work and actually do a job that she's used to doing professionally. Um, I wanted to know what was the issue where you hired me on, and then you kind of like took it back, it was like a snatch and grab, if that makes sense. So I wanted to know if somebody could reach out to me about the concern um, about this matter, cause I really feel like the hiring process over at DPS Transportation needs to get looked at. Um, as you can see, we have other employees that came up here and said their concerns, and I also feel like it's more people out there, they're just not speaking up. So I came here today to just speak up about the matter, to see why was I hired, but then it was like took back. So if you guys could, you know, address the matter, again, my name is Serena Murphy, and if you guys need my number, it's nine three seven four four three seven eight one seven, so someone can address me about the matter, thank you.
Thank you.
Conclusive tonight's, uh, speak-ups.
Thank you to all those who came out to speak. Miss Kidd, if you could get the information of the three individuals that brought up the issues regarding our hiring process, that would be great for us, and then if you could take that information and give it to Chief Davis, so we can just get some information on these files, that would be great.
Dr. Goodwin?
Go ahead.
Are we having an executive session?
We always have an executive session. And if your team could gather whatever you guys have between now and by the time we get to the executive session, that would be great for us as well. Is that, is that what you're gonna ask me?
Would you like to have that discussion in the executive session?
Absolutely, personnel, with us, yes. He moved. And Madam Treasurer, if you could give, it looks like Miss Kidd is already moving on it, but I think she may need that list. Okay, she's on it. Alright, thank you, you said that concluded our public comments?
Yes.
Alright, hearing of the bargaining unions, are there any members of the bargaining units that would like to speak?
I didn't think I was that short, okay. Good evening, protocol established, board members, Madam President. Let's see, Vice is not here, all of you board members. Um, my name is Marie Winfrey, a president for Local Six Two Seven Transportation, uh, school bus drivers. I'm here, concerns also, expressing concerns. You heard the matters of several past drivers on the issues of the process for our rehiring drivers. It's come to tell us that they state that we need drivers. And we understand we need a lot of drivers at this time, because we have also other dilemmas that we need to fix pertaining to transportation for all of our students, K through A and our high school students. Uh, we are always hiring, the process is that we're hiring and we train them, we start them off, it takes about four weeks. They still have to receive the Silver Service Test and get their CDL license. That takes about another two to three weeks. Then they have to pass everything, and the process it is, and they have to go with an onboard instructor. We have adding up about two to three months for these drivers to come on, to be able to be qualified and be commercial, professional commercial driver's license. As we do that, so we stand here concerned, the local, that we have several past drivers that has been approached and applied for the positions that have their license. All of them have already been recertified through the state and had their research. All of them is be drivers with experience to be rehired back, so we can have more added on to our list of transportation school bus drivers. We're hiring, you add up the cost of what you're paying for the training that will take place for the three to four months to one that would come back in already CDL license, and if they have any no, nothing on their records, and they're in good standing with the district and the union, then they could come back in their place of seniority. Or they have to do as our contract states, they have two years and they can come back if they resign. So in our local Article twenty-two. So we have concerns that how this process also is being for hiring drivers and rehiring. It was stated and asked of us by business manager, Dr. Marvin Jones, if we know any of our past drivers and they're in good standing to come back to the district, if they're in good standing, and we are out there doing that. We're trying to bring them in because we do want to be the best in transporting our students. So the thing is, and plus to have the information, excuse me, the transportation for our high school students, we want them all. So the concern that we have here is the process, how is this process is working? You're asking us to do something, we're out here reaching to these drivers, past drivers, and new people to come onboard to work for the district, and then we have these situations that comes above in place right now. So I'm asking the district, the board members also, to help us look into the situation, how we can proceed with this, to do things completely decently and in order. Please look at these drivers that came before and spoke in the public, look at the entity there and see if we can bring them back, even if we have to put them as per some of the district policies on probations or professional development performances. That will be able to, at least we know that our transportation will increase, we will have more drivers to be able to take our students to or fro the school without even being out of compliance. We're looking at those issues, please, I'm asking, on behalf of the Local Six Two Seven, that we look and take a look at the situation, how the process is for rehiring drivers in our transportation department and our transportation management staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other bargaining units to speak tonight? Okay, thank you. Well, for everybody else, next up, we actually have a special presentation from our Superintendent. This will be the first time we've ever gotten to see him present, so I am equally excited to see what others have only witnessed, so Dr. Lawrence, the floor is yours.
Do you have slides too?
Wow. Just refresh your screens.
That's a nice podium, don't mess it up.
That should go right to the front of your seat. They're gonna just do it on there, that's about that. Yeah, we have it on our screens, but you can go ahead and put a screen down.
Yeah, I want to put a screen in, I want the public to see it too.
They're gonna need to come down, because the screen is gonna be in front of their heads.
That's right, you cover them up.
Okay. That's what you gotta do. James is gonna get the screen down. We got it. Get your walking mic so they can hear you.
You know he ain't gonna be standing, he gonna do that little walk he do. Sideways walk.
I don't have a presentation, you have a presentation? I just refreshing, I don't have a presentation. Oh, there is.
Say y'all, I was not here.
Mr. Lacy helped design. He approved everyone.
He's looking at it now too, like.
Dr. Lawrence, would you like us to give you something to get started?
I'm a.
You want us to go to another part and come back to this?
Yeah.
Alright, so let's move on, come on back up. Yeah. Dr. Lawrence, your first recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lacy, second by Ms. Wick, any questions on the motion?
Just to clarify, July tenth.
That's correct.
You said June.
Alright. Seeing no questions, Madam Treasurer, may I have a vote?
President Goodwin?
No.
Mr. Lacy?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
No.
Four no, one yes.
Your next recommendation?
Dr. Goodwin, I recommend approval of the following consulting services, just an overview from last week. I think you or Board Member Walker asked me how many students, there were forty-two, forty-one of the forty-two passed, so this is, uh, to continue that work in the area of lobotomy certification.
Thank you, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lacy, second by Ms. Wick, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Your next recommendation?
Dr. Goodwin, my next recommendation is approval of the following contracts, and I do want to bring attention to Cagler, Brown, Hill, and Ritter, uh, agreement to establish a pilot junior RTC collaborative program that will cover all the armed forces and, and be available in all DPS high schools. We had a, uh, wonderful presentation this weekend at the board retreat, and it is Colonel, give me his last name.
Miller.
Colonel Miller, Colonel Miller. Colonel Miller, Colonel Miller, and Colonel Miller will be leading that work. Currently, we have Navy ROTC at Belmont, and we're here at Meadowdale with Army ROTC. So we look forward to having students learn about all the armed forces, that's what this is. And in fact, we look forward to in the future, this could be the baseline for us to have armed forces, ROTCs and all, I'm gonna say seven of the comprehensive, six comprehensive high schools and in County Mall Street as well. So I bring that to the board's attention. And then we have mental health services from the ESC, general funds, zero. This is a rollover contract that we just placed on since the forty-eight hour waiver was open. And then participants for MOU between Dayton Public Schools and Dayton Peewee. I think this is a repetitive, repetitive participant process that we have. And I'll ask anybody from athletics to give the details on it, but I've seen it before.
I thought we just did this.
We did just do this one, because there's something.
Oh, so we should take it off?
One, it should be under the business manager, but two, Dr. Jones, is there a reason why we're having this MOU a second time?
I am not sure why it's on here a second time.
Yeah, let's go ahead and put.
Can we pull that one off, please?
Sorry, repeat, but I wasn't sure it was a vote. And then finally, Samaritan Behavioral Health, contract services for YCats. We got our Adamus money in and from that, we're now asking for our YCats money to complete our comprehensive mental health programming for our students before the school year starts, school starts on. Teachers are back August 6th, August 12th, pre-K through nine, and then everyone comes back on the 13th, so we want to get it done right.
Are there, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Lacy, second by Ms. Wick, any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Does that conclude your recommendations?
That's a good one, that concludes my recommendations.
Alright, would you like to do your presentation or you want me to go on?
You know what, let's just keep rolling.
Alright. Madam Treasurer, your first recommendation?
I recommend the approval of the following, A, B, C, D and E together, as reviewed last week.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, second by Mr. Lacy, are there any questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Does that conclude your recommendations?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Jones, your first recommendation?
I recommend ratification of the forty-eight hour rule to present the following contract.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on, moved by Mr. Lacy, second by Ms. Wick, any questions on the motion? I have a couple of questions, can you explain to us tonight why we have a forty-eight hour waiver for this one?
Yes ma'am, we essentially, LWC conducted the bid process. Typically, that's something that we do internally, and so some dates were missed, if you will. And with that, we also began to examine some of our in-house practices. And so, moving forward, all contracts will be funneled to me via Business Plus. Also, when we have situations like this that come up, it'll be included in a workflow of Business Plus and not email.
Dr. Jones, I'm gonna ask that you get with Dr. Lawrence, because his team has gotten significantly better at these deadlines and actually get your team to training with them, because we've had two meetings since then, and we, this is the first that we're seeing this. Mr. Walker, did you have something?
Yeah, this is like the third forty-hour waiver, and if this is something from operations, I thought the practice was, if it was something for those departments, they would be here to give us more insight on it. I just, I struggle with if the practice is for things to be submitted, there's no way that this should have came in late.
Any other comments or questions on the motion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I get where we're coming from, but I also.
Can you put your mic up a little bit?
I also don't think, and I said it before, I really don't want to get, and I mean, if they give it to Dr. Jones, I really don't want to get in a space where we're calling people up on the carpet, we're doing those things, especially even as a board. We just made a vote out of the blue last week to get tents that came that day. So I mean, we can't hammer down on our employees. I get coming at our folk, but I wouldn't want the people under there to feel like they're under the gun because something just happens. It is a big district, things happen, and we always have the power to vote no. So I just, that is my thing, I want to put that out, because I don't want our employees having to come in because something comes in after deadlines, and deadlines are put in there. But we have seen where if things have to happen, we'll figure out a way to make it happen. And as a board that has the ability to say, we're gonna vote today on something, then we should still extend grace to folk that are in the district that work for us, that's all.
Mr. Walker?
While I appreciate my colleague's comment, I would just say that even seeing the contracts here, there, there's nothing really of insight of what actually is this project that's going on, going with the renovations. We voted on Jackson Center a year ago, and we are really doing things now to prepare for the school year. However, something like this, if this is renovations for Jackson, for the alternative school, whatever the case may be, it's been months in the work, so this, just seeing this today, and again, we just met Tuesday last week, Saturday, and then we're here again today.
So, so if I could, I'm sorry.
Did you want to hear from Dr. Jones, Mr. Walker?
Yeah, I'm just curious of now.
Mr. Lacy and Mr. Doc, Mr. Lacy and Mr. Walker would like to hear from Dr. Jones.
What is this project?
It's Jackson Center.
It's Jackson Center, but what is the renovations? What are we spending seventy-five thousand of taxpayer dollars on for Jackson Center?
So we have carpeting that's gonna take place. As you know, the south wing of the building is currently where we have some computer items, IT items. That part of the building is gonna be closed off, but in order to make the building safe, we have to put up a wall at the vertex or the L, the part that faces the highway. And so when, when parents come into the building, they won't be able to roam around the building, if you will. So it's a safety concern, also, it's to ensure that the lunchroom and kitchen go back to being just that, you know, for the past couple of years, it's been used as an office space. But we want a place for the, for the students to sit comfortably and eat lunch and breakfast. So there's a wall that has to be removed in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy.
Okay, it requires four votes, not a majority, right? I'm just asking for clarification.
Four, always four depends.
Okay, yeah, four, so I mean, if, if, if people are thinking of voting no, I mean, I would say, I would ask them to request that.
I'm not, I'm not voting no.
Okay.
That's what I do, but I'm not going to vote no, I just wanted to be clear that there's processes in place that we're not getting these last minute, when we just had two meetings that, hey, a phone call could have been made to board members to enlighten them, hey, I may have this, but waiting on the final actual purchase order to come through of the full amount or something like that, we're just seeing this today.
I understand.
Yeah, if I can reiterate, we didn't handle the bidding process, typically, we meet deadlines. This is one of those situations where another organization handled the bids, the contract came in just a a week or two ago, would have been right before the previous board meeting, so.
Alright, thank you, Madam President.
Are there any other questions or comment on the motion?
Yes, there are.
Yeah, I know, we still on the forty-eight hour waiver though, but go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Alright, Dr. Jones, how many more of these do you foresee coming in the next month or so? You kind of on the schedule where you need to be?
We are on schedule.
I appreciate it, that's all I needed.
Thank you, any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Dr. Jones, your next recommendation?
Yes, I recommend ratification of the following contract.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and second question on the motion for myself, can you tell us about this addition for School AI?
Mr. Williams, just saw him. Okay, so School AI is something that actually the academic side of the house is, is gonna be implementing in the classrooms. We actually moved it to our budget so that, I mean, we're gonna be supporting it from an IT standpoint. And so School AI is a way to personalize student learning, and it's capable of doing several other things as well.
Are there any questions, other questions on the motion?
So it's IT budget and not general fund?
No, it, general fund, but it's, we're supporting it.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote?
President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you, does that conclude your recommendations? Dr. Jones, does that conclude your recommendations?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you, we are going to jump back up to Dr. Lawrence now for his presentation.
Alright.
Y'all knows.
Meadowdale, oh Meadowdale, heart belongs to you, our loyalty, we pledge to thee, two friends revered and true, our lion spirit brave and bold, we'll proudly wear the black and gold. Our hollow hearts will never be a part of every memory. Now, do you know dumb balls or no? He don't know it.
You did.
Patterson didn't have no song. They just said, we here for two weeks, we gone for two weeks.
I didn't get any Snickers today.
They ain't had no Snickers.
I see.
Alright, while they are doing that, I'm going to move to board travel. I recommend the approval of the following board travel OSBA Capital Conference.
So moved.
There's second, moved by Mr. Walker, second by Mr. Lacy, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote?
President, President Goodwin?
Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick?
Yes.
Five yeses.
Thank you, I'll save the second part till after executive session. So what is the ETA on this presentation, is it happening or?
Somebody just told me, you know.
Eric, we can do the good by God.
Alright, so we'll do closing comments, while we're waiting on that, Madam Treasurer, do you have any comment? Oh, sorry, Ms. Hamilton, do you have any comments?
My only comment is to congratulate the treasurer, and in advance, congratulate the rest of the district on some of our moves for this building.
Thank you, Dr. Jones.
I just want to thank all of Business Services, we've been working fanatically to get the buildings up and running. And so I appreciate your collaboration, your hard work, all of your efforts do not go unnoticed.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer.
I would like to say thank you to my team for their hard work and dedication to get this award today for the district. And I would like to say thank you to the board and superintendent for their support, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Yes, I want to say thank you for everybody that came out. Definitely want to give a huge shout out to our transportation staff that came out and spoke. I appreciate not only coming out and speaking, but for those that came out in solidarity. I just always believe in us standing with each other, and I believe we can always get to the root of our issues if we work with each other and first see each other as human beings, so just want to say I appreciate you guys. Uh, where'd my guy go, dude? Appreciate you coming out, you know, it's different not seeing you out here at the soccer field, it's a lot different there, so. Appreciate you coming out and sharing that, and for, for your colleagues and their support. I want to say thank you to everybody who set up this beautiful, beautiful space at this beautiful, beautiful high school. Like the backdrop and the chairs, I mean, this was just a first-class operation all the way around, so. Brother Marcus, shout brother Marcus out, brother Marcus, we gotta put a statue, he been here since I was here, which is, you know, five years ago or so. But lastly, I do want to say, we're about to start school, please do everything you need to do to get out there. If your babies need to get enrolled, come down and see our fabulous enrollment staff. Really, let's get back and kick off this year the way we know we have, we know we talked about some changes because of some state things last year. It's time for Daytonians to come together and do what Daytonians can do when Daytonians are up against a wall, and that's work together and come together. So I just want to encourage everybody out there, want to say thank you to everybody that does the work, and another shout out to Chief Jones. She had a cool little write-up in the paper the other day, that was pretty dope, I said, oh, man, that was pretty cool. I want to say thank you to her and all of her work, and thank you for all the work she does, our church has the best drummer on this side of town too. Y'all know that, she's talented, see, I'll tell y'all that, so. But let's get out here, love on each other, and keep the main thing the main thing, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence, to your presentation, they're ready to go.
Uh, I can't see on my screen.
Y'all can go down further, we don't need to. Go ahead.
Y'all got him a walking mic.
Little bit more, there we go.
That's pretty much focused.
What about right here, right here?
Y'all know about heart?
Here, you can have my iPad.
Yeah, I mean. No, this is good, this is good, you can go back to the first screen. Alright, thank you so much for being here today, this is actually the biggest crowd we've had all summer at our, on our summer tour at school, so thanks for coming out, I appreciate it. Dr. David Lawrence, Superintendent of Dayton Public Schools, alternative school at Jackson Center. So I probably shouldn't say this, I was first tasked with this briefly as a business manager. Uh, so, I probably shouldn't say this. I was first tasked with this briefly as a business manager. And then as I was transitioning to superintendent, I lost track of it. But the Board of Education had a resolution uh, a few months ago to make sure I didn't lose track of it again. So here we are. What does an alternative school mean? So there are lots of alternative schools around the country and alternative school generally means a setting that offers a different approach, um, catering to students who need, whose needs are not being met in the school. Uh, these students may employ many diverse methods to address various student challenges, including academic, behavioral, and emotional difficulties. That's important. Academic, behavior, and emotional difficulties. So that's where we wanna focus at Jackson Center, uh, Alternative School at Jackson Center. Student Voice. In May of 2025, uh, we asked the six high school principals if they could put together a group of students who they thought may be candidates for Jackson Center. We wanted to know what those students uh, thought Jackson Center should be or what they envisioned. So we started with student voice. Uh, and then that room was Dr. Marvin Jones and Ms. Sharon Goins, who were there to help support. And what we heard students say in that environment was they wanted a safe environment. That came up repeatedly, a safe environment. They wanted teachers who care and respect. Respect is in all capital letters because we heard that over and over and over from students. We want, they wanted adults or teachers who respected them. They wanted adults who took the extra time, stayed after school, had lunch with them, maybe came early, but who took time to be with them and hear their concerns and needs. And they wanted school to not be boring. That's probably a universal thing across this nation, but they let us know that. They said one of the reasons that they're having difficulty in school is because it's boring. Teacher Voice. Uh, teachers responded and said, you know, they want kids who wanna be respected, so do we. Uh, so we're tired of the disrespect. We're tired of the insubordination. Uh, so we want students to work on that on their end. They also, teachers also were sentimental around, they wanted wraparound services. They said, hey, when students are in situations where they're being insubordinate or we're having behaviors that are outside the norm, they said, there's gotta be additional support for them. We can't do all that in school. We can't do that. We can't teach and provide those wraparound services. And then they wanted to see restorative practices to reduce recidivism, meaning the repetitive, repeated nature of when offenses happen. And then when students were suspended, they were coming back, then being suspended again, then coming back and suspended again. They said, what, what can you do to make sure that they don't keep returning after they're suspended? Parent Voice. Uh, when students withdraw, or excuse me, when families withdraw from Dayton Public Schools, um, it, there are a variety of things that happen. They come to the school and s- and give us reasons why they're withdrawing. They go to um, student enrollment and give us reasons why they're withdrawing. And sometimes they call um, our, we have a um, a, a parent, kind of a complaint log where you can call and tell why you're withdrawing. And one of the reasons was because they felt that schools were unsafe. Felt the schools were unsafe. They wanted institutions that were free from altercations. I thought about that when I wrote that. That is code word for fights. Uh, they wanted a calm environment in which order rules, clear hallways, efficient dismissals and entries, and orderly lunches. They said, the parents said, those are some things that uh, they felt were not happening. And if I feel my kid is not safe, uh, specifically, this is at the secondary level, then I may take them out and move on to another option. We don't see uh, this really at all at the elementary level. Uh, can you bring that up some? Or bring the uh, while they're doing that, what you see in front of you are the high school attendance rates. And one of the reasons that Jackson Center, the alternative school is gonna be important is we are working toward not having s- student exclusion. That means trying to make sure that we include students in attendance rates where they're not suspended. So what happens in high school is, and in middle school, is you get a 10-day suspension, you go home for 10 days, and then when you come back, you're already chronically absent. And that's one of the reasons that the high school attendance rates, they almost never are as good as the elementary. It's the exception of one school, uh, sometimes one and a half. So what you see here are the attendance rates at the high school and you see 25, you see 76% for Belmont, opponents 83, Dunbar 73, Meadowdale 81, Stivers 90, Thurgood 79. I do wanna make a special, have a special shout out for Thurgood. Uh, if you look at their attendance, 69.9, 75.9, and 79.1, that's a lot to do with the administrative team. That team, uh, led by Ms. Lewis, they really respect kids, care about kids, take that extra time. They do those things. And when you do those things with kids, you can see improvements in all type of metrics across the board in high school, middle school, or elementary. So what we wanna do, again, when you're remanded to or sent to Jackson Center, it's in lieu of suspension. So we don't want you absent at home for 10 days. We want you at Jackson Center with wraparound services so we can try to push up high school attendance rates. I'm ready? Chronic absenteeism. I just mentioned that. Your first 10 day, try not 10 days, try five. Uh, at that point, you're already on the way to being chronically absent. And so we're trying to change that again by having in lieu of suspension at Jackson Center. And once again, where is Thurgood? You can see Thurgood, again, that team, uh, again, led by Ms. Lewis, they embody respect and shall we say, love for the kids. You can see it and feel it when you're in the building. And you can look at their chronic absenteeism, going from 66, 70 to 82. You see a 15% um, decrease, which is really positive. Uh, in fact, they lead the district in that space. So what we're trying to do again is decrease chronic absenteeism, increase attendance. Those are two reasons that we have Jackson Center opening. Uh, I don't know that the schools matter, so you may not be able to get down further. But these are level three incidences. Level three incidences are, where's my, my Chief Wright? Raise your hand. Chief Wright, those are, those are some of the worst incidents that we have in our handbook. Uh, they include weapons, uh, drugs, and gang-related activity and mul- multi-factor fights. Uh, we uh, wanna make sure that we reduce level three incidences in schools so that they're safe. And you can see 25, 24, and 23. And you can see an increase on the far left. I believe that is Belmont. Um, and the others, we kinda stayed steady, but those are still too many. Um, you see triple digits, level three offenses in some of the high schools. We gotta get away from that. Uh, that screams unsafe. And then finally, here are the numbers for you. And once again, uh, you see Thurgood, again, with that leadership team that really cares about kids, EJ Brown, and then Meadowdale, home of the Lions. That's another team that cares and loves kids and demonstrates it every day and shows it by respect. And you can see the decrease in the le- number of level three incidents. So the principals are currently, right now, uh, down in Liberty Center for the principal retreat for the next two and a half days. And we're having conversations around how, how we treat kids and how staff treats kids. And staff is everybody. That means SROs, that means food service, custodial, how we treat kids. That has a large effect on what we do in terms of chronic absenteeism and attendance. But if, when we can't get it right, we want Jackson Center to be that fail-safe, kinda that parachute place where kids can go and we can make sure they're taken care of. And I'm gonna make, I just saw Chief Wright out the corner of my eye. This is part of, Jackson Center does not stand alone. Don't think about it as standalone. It's part of an entire comprehensive program that we have and all-out offensive to make schools safe this year. So Jackson Center is one piece. Chief Wright and his team and the high school and middle school principals last spring met to put together a plan for this year for safe schools. And what that means is, after 10 o'clock, no entry. Um, unless you have a guardian or a parent with you. Cannot be in school after 10. That means get to school on time. I can hear the backdrop of transportation. That actually might work out. If you're not writing RTA and you're being dropped off, you might get to school even sooner. And also, clear hallways. Make sure the hallways are clear and that teachers feel safe and that there's not a lot of disruption in school. So we've been working very closely uh, with Chief Wright and his team to, again, it's part of a safe schools campaign, not just Jackson Center. But again, uh, Thurgood, Meadowdale, but and I, I'm, but I'm gonna double down on Thurgood again. Uh, that's relationship right there. And you can see them in the green across the board. Uh, I hear curriculum a lot. Uh, what is curriculum? It's a set of activities, assignments, and assessments. Those are all academic terms. Uh, what we're really meaning when we say curriculum at Jackson Center is, we're gonna use artificial intelligence, school AI to work as an individual tutor for kids. Artificial intelligence right now is a hot topic. And on one side, uh, there's a group of people says that kids shouldn't use it. It's cheating. On the other side, they say it takes large volumes of information, makes it simple for kids so they can understand. Well, we err on the side of large volumes of information. We want to simplify it so we can have the conversation with some of our most at-risk students. And we'll be using that at Jackson Center. In addition, Apex is our credit recovery tool that we use across the board. And we're gonna be using Apex to credit recover in the building. And we'll also be using direct instruction with tier two and three supports. All fancy words for, um, it's not just the teacher teaching, but we're trying to make this a process that is different uh, so that kids will enjoy the time that they're there as best they can. And we can help rehabilitate them with that last bullet which says restorative practices or restorative circles. Uh, we currently um, train the entire district at the secondary level on restorative circles. We gotta do a better job of implementing it. Uh, training is one thing, implementing is another. Uh, so that um, we cannot see recidivism. But that will be a major part of what we do strategically at Jackson Center. It'll be part of the curriculum where it happens every day, uh, where we get to our restorative circles together and get to the bottom of some of the conflicts and trauma uh, that some of our students have. Transportation. The expectations will be that grades nine through 12 parents will transport students to and from Jackson Center. Seven to eighth grade parents will transport to school. And I'm working with Dr. Jones to think about alternatives for the PM. We have not completely fleshed that out. Uh, but the reason that middle school and high school are different is we offer K through eight busing for kids in Dayton Public. We don't offer it on yellow buses, 912. So it's an idea around thinking about how we can um, how we can help support those students in the afternoon. I, I do wanna say another shout out to transportation. I, I used to spend a lot of time there. And um, you, you've done an amazing job of Craig and your team of getting lots of extra drivers, having routes be on time. And I think uh, we have the possibility, cause I know you, you never turn down work. Uh, I know that for a fact. So we have a possibility of trying to figure that out and have, I see you. You never turn down work. How we get those seven to eight graders home from Jackson Center. We have some additional time because Jackson Center uh, will be open two weeks after school. Um, so we have some additional time. It's not as urgent as the other piece around transportation for the beginning of school. Goals. As I've mentioned a number of times, reduce the number of level two and level three infractions, minimize the number of repeat suspensions, create small group student support for struggling students, and develop safer spaces in all of our secondary schools so that students can learn, teachers can teach. It's really that simple. What ifs and what abouts? What if and what about? What if your guardian doesn't drop the student off at the school? The suspension will not begin until the student arrives at Jackson Center. The days will be counted as unexcused absences and our truancy team will be, will be dispatched after the third day. You gotta get there. What if a student is involved in a level three infraction while at Jackson Center? That depends on what the level three infraction is. Um, it's possible that students could be expelled from Jackson Center, but this is an opportunity. I am really remiss. I should've said this early on. It's a major gap in my presentation. LaLita Christian is the principal of Jackson Center, the alternative school. For those people who know her, caring, loving, uh, is in the community, been around Dayton Public Schools for almost 30 years. Uh, she finds a way to build relationships with kids. Couldn't be a better fit for here. So I hope we don't have to have any expulsions from uh, Jackson Center. How many days will students be present at Jackson Center? The plan is for five and 10-day stays at Jackson Center. So you'd be in lieu of suspension for five or 10 days based on a level two or level three offense. There may be some students who are there based on uh, the high school principals list that they're working on right now. Uh, they may be there um, for extended periods and possibly all year, uh, depending on um, their evaluation status. I'm ready? What if my student has an IAP? Is Jackson Center a change of placement? Yes. So the Office of Exceptional Children is involved in the team at Jackson Center. And any student that's sent to, remanded, or placed at Jackson Center, uh, we have our OEC team to make sure that we're in compliance. What if I refuse to attend Jackson Center? Uh, that's not an option. Uh, if you serve a suspension, you will be sent to Jackson Center for at least five days for restorative practices and re-entry protocol. What that means is, if you don't go and you're gone for five or 10 days, no problem. But until you walk back into Meadowdale or any other school, you still have to go back there so that we can go through restorative practices and try to understand why you were suspended. What about lunch in recess? Uh, lunch will be catered during the first half of the year. Recession is optional and will be handled by the principal. And I've also got a question. What about grades lower than seven? Possibly in the future, it could go from four to 12 because we have pre-K through three mandatory non-suspension. In Ohio, is, Ohio is one of the states where you can't by law, Ohio revised code, suspend kids pre-K through three. There are some states where it's pre-K through six where you can't suspend them. But this, these are future plans. Um, we have not fleshed those out yet. Can I participate in sports? No. Uh, who will my teachers be? We don't know all of this at ti- at this time, but we have at least 20 applications that we'll be hiring and transferring teachers soon. Uh, I wrote a note to myself. We, we may need, or we need a special board meeting uh, to staff the school prior to the beginning of the school year. Uh, policy on naming the school. I keep saying Jackson, at alternative, alternative at Jackson. Uh, there's a process for that. Uh, and the Board of Education determines the name of the school which currently Jackson. Uh, as academics, we're out of the business in naming, not our deal. Uh, we're about making it a world-class facility and making sure your kids are taken care of, but the naming of it, that's left to the board. So, um, those considerations, uh, as you can see in front of you, are about individuals who have had outstanding contributions, uh, the geographical location of the building, uh, and other appropriate names, uh, as deemed by the board. I did email the board and ask if uh, we could name it the um, William Smith Academy, and they said no. The superintendent must form a naming committee that includes administrators, parents, committee members, employees, and students. Whenever you see superintendent, you should always think superintendent slash designee. Um, because the superintendent does some work, but most of the work is done by the staff. So Ms. Sharon Goins uh, and LaLita Christian will uh, lead the work of forming that committee um, and getting input and then giving recommendations to the board as a function of that committee. Uh, and then I thought this was interesting. The board will not be influenced by personal prejudice, favoritism, political pressure, or uh, that's just temporary, temporary part, part popularity. Uh, finally, uh, we are DPS. Uh, I'll take questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence. I'm gonna actually kick us off, cause you said some things that were a little different than what we heard at the board retreat on Saturday.
Well, that's cause, you know, um, you, you, you and I have talked about this.
Let's, let's start with the, the sports one. Can you give us a little bit more on that? Cause we got a different answer on the sport one based on in lieu of termination, our suspension and suspension. So give me a little bit more.
I'll give you a little bit more. At the retreat, we had this que- I asked the question at the retreat. Uh, I was trying to fi- figure out if you're there in lieu of suspension. So suspension is, suspension means no. Athletics, no, 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 no. In lieu of means we're sending you somewhere else to serve the term, right? So you're not really kinda like suspended. You're going somewhere else. And the question was, can you still participate in athletics? I was thinking possibly practice, certainly not games. Um, and as I listened to the conversation and I watched the chief of athletic director's eyes, um, there are other um, considerations that have to be made that I think are too complex. So as the superintendent, I just made a decision. Uh, it's no. And of course, when we send this recommendation to you, you can veto it, but that's my, gonna be my recommendation.
Follow up on that one. The, the students that are there that aren't suspended, is that still applicable to them as well?
No, so let's go, let's say, very good. Let's say you um, so currently, like I said, in Cincinnati- so currently, like I said, in Cincinnati right now, the principals are getting together. And they may have, they are, may have a batch of maybe 28 to 35 kids. Once we have parental support, parental petition, parental participation and parental sign-off. You were not remanded there because you had a level two or level three offense. You were there because you chose a different setting, because you might like the curriculum we're offering. No, you don't have to not participate in sports. You're eligible.
And where did you land on if these would be non-enrolled or if they would be coded to homeschools?
I'm sorry, Dr. Goodwin, I could not hear you.
Where did you land on if these will be treated as non-enrolled students, like the International School? Or if they will be treated like have homeschools, like Dayton Digital?
We landed on homeschools.
And are we going to do that same thing with the International School?
Yeah, we're going to correct that. Yeah. So we had a conversation around that, actually this morning while we had the retreat. While we were waiting to ramp up, had a little mini athletic conversation. And we, we are going to go back and correct that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
No problem.
All right, Dr. Lawrence. So question for me. A principal has said with parental or not necessarily parental, you're going to the alternative school. Is there an appeal process from the principal and that parent not agreeing with that to you or?
To not agree with the being sent to the alternative school?
Yes.
So which, which set of students? The students that are, well, there's three sets. The students that are on home instruction that are from OEC. Those seats are given, they're going to be there. That's going to save us quite a bit of money. I don't know the exact number, but I have to get that from Ms. Denzmore. You've addressed that several times, like Dr. Lawrence, why are we paying the ESC all this money? So, so we're working on it. So that's going to save us money. So that's not an option there. Then the option where, where you were, you're suspended, there's no options there. The option around, hey, parent participation, you agree to this? Yeah, that's, that's, that's not an appeal. If the parent agrees, then, then you go.
Now, if the parent doesn't agree?
Oh, then you, you stay where you are. We can't, we can't do that. That's, yeah, we can't do that by law.
Second question I have. So the last board meeting I asked, will Jackson Center be open the first day of school? The answer then was yes. So now it's two weeks after the first day of school. So what's the plan going to be for those students in the meantime?
Yes, thank you. So I think, yeah, I did, I did say yes. And I quipped after that too, that I said, I know the board members will be there the first day. And actually I, I mentioned two weeks because I said, you'll probably be there the first day. I'm letting you know now that for the first two weeks, you won't see any of the students who are on the five and 10 day suspension. And you won't see the kids who the principals right now are saying, hey, let's get parent permission. We think this might be a good placement for you, given that we're going to use alternative means of instruction. You, I got to talk to Dr. Denzmore to see if her people will be ready, the home instruction folks. I have to email you back on that one.
Okay.
But, but if the five and 10 day suspension, that starts after the first two weeks.
Thank you. And then a, a part of your presentation said something about recess. Middle schoolers and high schoolers get recess?
So middle school, yes. We have recess at middle schools. Yeah, yeah. If you go to Wright Brothers, there's recess. I used to have it, I used to have it at EJ Brown with the former principal. I don't know what the current was going to do, but yeah.
And then last question is for Dr. Jones, actually. So where did we land on nutrition services staff at this facility?
So that's a question I have to defer to my colleague, Dr. Marvin B. Jones.
Actually, we're going to utilize staff members from other buildings, the first couple of weeks of school. By the second semester, we should know if we need to fully staff the building.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Whit.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Lawrence. And I know, you know, we're just getting this off the ground, but if you look at the numbers on the number of, level three incidents, you know, based on, so Belmont is, was at this point in time, seven through 12. Opponents was nine through 12. The numbers, but the, the story of the numbers really says that our junior high buildings really have the highest degree of incidents based on, junior high buildings only have seventh and eighth graders, buildings with 300 kids in them. So what is the, the track look like for being able to capture some of these behaviors early on for our junior high kids? So that potentially in high school, you know, we're eliminating some of that. So.
I think what you're mentioning is per capita, there may be more level three offenses at the middle school. So we, I'm just going to say it now. We have, we have an emphasis this year. I mentioned Thurgood Marshall repeatedly. A lot of these level three offenses are, are, there are three things. One, they really are level three offenses. If there are several board members who spend time in school, you can't get away from these things happen. I would be dishonest if I said they weren't, they weren't happening. And we have, again, we have a, a complete focus on, have on safe schools this year. Chief Wright and I are looking forward to our results. So they're happening. The other one is how teachers code things. This is like in real life, like when you're stopped by a police officer and they, they, instead of one charge, you get six or seven or eight. And then they call the principal. And so sometimes teachers are coding things as level three offenses in terms of how they feel, they're really not level three offenses. And so we have to tease out, being culturally responsive to how you, how you address what you see as an educator in that space. And then we have to also at the leadership level, begin to really build those relationships. And it's really hard to do at the middle school level. You spend a lot of time there. Middle schoolers in some, in, in many instances can be more difficult than high school. So thank you for that question. That is why, let's just say that, not sure what happened at the retreat, but that is, that was not, that was not accurate. I have, I was at the last meeting with all of the seven through 12 principals. And I don't remember any communication with me. Or Lisa Minor, the assistant superintendent that said we were doing nine 12. This has always been a seven 12 venture. With the idea around, how do we get back to do four, five and six as quickly as possible?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Smith?
Uh, Mr. Smith.
Yes. So first, so you said won't be open until two weeks after school starts, correct? So what, what we be doing, we go by buckets of students? The OEC bucket, what's going to be with that? They'll just be continuing what they would have done before until we're ready?
No, I think the OEC bucket, they're already moving on that because we know where they are. We know who they are.
That's, okay. So that's probably why I'm asking for clarity because the way it looks, it's like, it looks concrete across the board.
Okay.
So the students that would need the, the parental sign-off. For those that say, hey, maybe your child had XYZ going on. Maybe this might be better, or even a parent that comes in and says, hey, I think this might be. Are they going to be waiting in this holding somewhere for two weeks? Or will they be ready when the school year starts?
So our thinking is that when we have scheduled preview, and you've been to those before. They're typically about a week before school that we would note, we would notify the parents before that. But that at scheduled preview, we would have the sit-down to say, hey, this is a possibility. Where are you? And at scheduled preview, that's an appropriate time to do it because if we, if, if your guardians say, hey, Will Smith's a go. Then we can begin the process with Delina, student enrollment, student assignment of transferring you over to Jackson Center.
So there's the possibility of those students being there the day one instead of the second.
Yes, it's a possibility of that group being there day one, the parent consent.
So what you're saying, the group that will not be there for the first two weeks are the group that are there in lieu of, or to serve out a five to 10 day suspension?
Correct. And that is, that's because the high school and middle school principals. I was in the meeting when they agreed to this and I, I agree to this as a former high school principal. That we kind of get some, for the most part, we kind of get some grace the first two weeks. I'm looking at Mr. Walker, he's shaking his head. He was in school. There wasn't a lot going on the first couple of weeks. And then after people's shoes get a couple of scuffs on them and people get to know each other, then things start to happen. So that group, we're just kind of easing into that.
Well, I don't know. I've been in some of these buildings sometime, Dr. Lawrence. I've seen some fights day one.
Well,
Change real quick sometimes.
Well, uh, well, yeah, I don't know. Maybe the game has changed. It's been a while since I was high school principal. I don't know.
Frisky first day sometimes.
Okay. Well, Chief Wright is over my shoulder. I know we're going to be all over this. It's going to be safe schools, safe schools.
What I wanted to get cleared up because I don't want people out there watching thinking that, you know, because, that these two students would be at, say, a dumb bar or a Thurgood. And be there for two weeks, knowing that in two weeks, they're about to go to this other space.
Oh no, that's a license to.
Want to make sure with everything we're talking about, we're clearing it up. Also, my thought is, I think, I think you already addressed it, but just make sure that's crystal.
Got it.
For students that are in that voluntary track, they would still have their homeschool, correct?
That is correct.
So then that, they would be eligible for extracurriculars at their homeschool, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I want that to be clear. So it's those students who are at a school and they are getting into some kind of trouble. Then it's basically the same protocol of what they would have to do if they were suffering, going through the same issues at their school. So if they're being there, those are the students who are not then allowed to get involved in extracurriculars. Because they're serving out what they would be serving out, which I totally am, am cool with. I just wanted to make.
So we were waiting for this presentation. Now that's over, there have been some questions that you all have asked that we're going to add to the slide deck. And then we're going to clean it up and then put it on the website so that it's available for the public.
Okay. Yeah. Cause then I have some questions when we're talking.
With the chart.
This space in saying, okay, if I have volunteer students and then I have kids come over because some things happened. Like looking into what does that look like in classroom spaces? What does that look like in how are we moving them together and those kinds of circles? I would love to be able to see our parents come through. I think it would be good too, to just invite them out once we get it going. To be able to see that because some students just might need a different space. So then my other question following is, what if there is a student who gets into it at their school? Gets into some kind of trouble, needs some kind of reset, needs some kind of restorative space. And they're over here and between staff, student, parent, they go, you know what? This is a better fit for my child. What does that look like if I'm a parent and my child gets into some trouble? Is over at this alternative space and goes, you know what? Jackson fits my child better. What does that look like in your mind right now? Because in my mind, what I would fear or would not want to see happen is a child, embrace that space more. Get taken out of that space to go back to whatever school they were at. And now, because you see this in, in different industries and different spaces where it's, it's that I, I was able to go over to where I liked being at by doing this behavior. And so then they start that behavior in and what I wouldn't want is a process.
So that you won't lose any credits and we can continue to move forward with your education at Jackson Center. What it looks like is making that change with your homeschool and then you become a Jackson Center student. Or whatever name you all come up with.
Okay. And then I think this is the last one for right now that I was thinking. In the space here, you spoke a lot about restorative practices. In doing so, I would want, and I think I know your answer, but, are we going to make sure that we're still embodying restorative practices in our other buildings? I wouldn't want it to be a space where, okay, child does this, writes you up, you're out of here, peace out. And you do the restorative stuff there, but we're not still constantly working because we'll need the restorative. I think if you have that restorative practices in the other buildings, then I, over time, you may see a reduction of the need to send people in the lieu of the five and 10 day thing. So.
That, that was part of the presentation by saying that, hey, this is about relationships. So we, we shouldn't have to do this. If you do those things that you're talking about, then we shouldn't have to send everyone there. And no, you can't, we're not, we're not going to give the adults an easy way out to, to do, to say that, hey, I don't want to do restorative practices. So you go there and, and Ms. Christian and her team do it. Actually, and we, I was studying Denver Public, they have a committee. And Ms. Dooley, I think is leading that. No problem. No problem.
Appreciate you.
Are there any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dr. Lawrence.
Absolutely.
Back to closing comments, Ms. Whit.
Thank you. Thank you, all the transportation people for coming out this evening. There's, oh, I always love seeing all of our people come out. But transportation, you have such heart and passion and you're such a community and I love that. And my mom and dad were both bus drivers. So got up with my mom every morning at like 4:30 and rode the school bus. So my brother didn't beat me up. Anyway, but just kind of kidding. Anyway, thank you, Dr. Goodwin, for a wonderful board retreat this weekend. We had some great learning experiences and the board joined together and, you know, got to know each other a little bit differently and that was very nice. One of the presentations that Dr. Lawrence mentioned and that we approved tonight is the junior ROTC program, which I'm so excited about for. I watched something the other day on a jump rope, jump rope. And I think that we should have some jump rope clubs. And they do, what is the old double dutch when they did the whole double dutch thing? So I just throw that out because I'm always looking, we're looking for after-school activities, after-school things for kids to do. And I think a jump rope club would really, these kids are real physical. They like to move and music and dance. And I think it would be fantastic. So, other than that, super excited for the school year, all the work that's being done. I appreciate you all. And the energy that you're bringing to Dayton Public Schools and the work that we're doing and proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lacy.
Yes. Last, this past Thursday, I, I attended the finance committee meeting. And everything seemed to be in good order. I want to thank the treasurer, our, the treasury staff and, and all the staff for, for the honor you bring to the, to the Dayton Board of Education.
The state house will meet again July 21st. So although items were vetoed out of the governor's budget, they may come back in this special session that is being called. Lastly, I will say my comments on the high school transportation. As a board and our leadership reports directed to us regarding high school transportation. We have not said that we are not doing anything. We just told our team to come up with, like, what is the best option to make things work? I will echo what I said before is that, to be clear. That also is saying that no, Dayton Public Schools will not pay overtime for staff to work at the hub or the library. You did not want our kids downtown. You figure out how to do it yourself. We're not going to waste our dollars of trying to help situations. And you continue to not come to the table and provide your own funding for things, but then you want to go. Hey, that's my comments. Thank you all.
Dr. Lawrence?
Uh, I would like to thank the fun. Got some work done. I would like to take this opportunity to send a special thank you to Sarah Kosner, who's the assistant principal at Eastmont. And Megan Whitman, who's the assistant principal at Waugaman. They both received job offers in other districts. And they have stayed while they could have been offered home and worked with the administrative team. At each one of those schools, Waugaman, Eastmont, Ms. He worked with Ms. Collier and then worked with Ms. Jackson at Waugaman. Partied with the principals and assistant principals. And congratulations to Madam Treasurer, wonderful job and winning, winning yet another award. And again, to the board, Dr. Jones and I, I saw an email exchange earlier. We will be sending you a proposal on transportation options within the next 24 hours.
Thank you. I do want to thank everybody that was a part of the board retreat. Mr. Lacy missed it because he was out living his best life, but that's okay. We had a good time. Thank you to my team, Ms. Kidd and Ms. Garen. You guys did a great job of making sure things were there. Thank you to Dr. Davis, who I pulled in at the last minute to copy something I saw her do and it worked out really well for us. Chief Webb, you and Dr. Davis gave a great, great little talk that helped individuals learn a lot more about payroll and HR. And I do believe it was a really needed discussion. Mr. Anderson did a great job also giving us some transportation information and us having that dialogue as well. Dr. Jones, you jumped in on that one too. I think we learned a lot about our leadership styles and the styles of those who were there. So I do appreciate Chief Jones, thanks for coming out. Hollis, we learned a lot. Ms. Hamilton. And I think that was, there's some other people there, but I don't see them here. So I'm not going to say their names. We're just going to act like they didn't come. So that's, you said, well, he's not here. We're not going to call people who are not here. It's as if he wasn't even there. It didn't even happen. So I appreciate that. I want to thank the transportation team. Ms. Ms. Winfrey is always very vocal and is a major advocate for your team. So thank you for continuing to do your part. Thank you for the individuals. Because it takes a lot of courage to come and advocate for yourself. It is easy for some people who do it naturally. But to do it for yourself is a real step that is needed. I'm going to echo my colleague, Mr. Walker. Not only advocating for yourself in this space, but as a community. I'm gonna echo my colleague, Mr. Walker, not only advocating for yourself in this space, but as a community, that is something that we need more and more as we are on this journey right now. Like the transportation situation is just one example of where community voices are needed consistently and repeatedly for us to find solutions. I do want to address one thing about the bus passes because my mom stopped me because she got stopped in the hair salon and she said she didn't know how to answer. And I told her that I would state at the meeting that just because Dayton Public Schools is not buying bus passes, that does not prevent individual caregivers to buy a bus pass for your child. Your child is not prevented whatsoever from stopping to get on the bus if you purchase the pass from. The only difference here is that Dayton Public Schools will not be purchasing the passes because there are constraints on what could happen with that pass if we buy it. So I do want to be clear, if the bus is something that you are choosing to utilize, you still have that ability, nothing has changed for you besides you being, or your family beings, the one to purchase that. Let's see, I also want to thank my team, my customer service committee team. We had over 50-plus district employees apply to join the customer service committee. I know, we out here. And they have been doing interviews like crazy because, yeah, it's a big thing. A lot of people want to be on here, which is really great for our district that people want to see us get better in customer service. So yes, thank you for that one and we are excited. I have nothing to do with the selection process and I am very grateful for that. So I can't wait to see who the team ultimately decides to move forward. And I'm still advocating that there's a place for a lot more than what they intended because I think that's going to help us ultimately really improve customer service throughout the district. Madam Treasurer, I will say, I've been here for all four of these awards. And I like to believe that I'm your good luck charm out here. Because this wasn't happening until I got on the board. I don't know what they were doing, so it's really our award. I'm just looking at consistency here. The rest of these people have been in your life longer than me, but when we got together, you may be, but she's got, she's a four-peat out here. That makes me a four-peat. It's really good. Mr. Lacy was here before me. They didn't have a streak. Mr. Smith and Ms. Whit were as well, didn't have a streak. So we're winning right now and I appreciate the treasury team. It, it don't count, I have four, so. Thank you all for that piece and I'm excited that we continue to have these audits that continue to show, again, the excellence that is occurring with our treasury department and ensuring that we are physically responsible. I want to thank the team that put us here. One of the reasons we come out to the school is not only to experience a board, as board members, what our staff and students endure in a school. Because today I learned it is hot in Meadowdale and it's a different level of hot. And we gotta work on this AC unit here because, you know, this wasn't one of the hottest days. We also got to learn about the technology gaps that we have here. And I think those are things that we can improve to ensure the people who use these products and these systems, that they actually have them available. So I appreciate that the technology gaps that we saw, because we got to see some real gaps in the school and those give us opportunities to improve those for the people who utilize these every day. The air situation though, Dr. Jones, if your team can look into this. Because yes, we definitely want our team to be comfortable when they are in these places because that's a big thing. Man, it is hot. So I like it to be a cool 69. That's all I'm asking for. You should be able to put a sweater on and go, all right, if I need to take it off because I get hot, that's what I want. So yes. So with that, thank you, everybody who came out. This, I believe, actually, we, we have one more school that we're gonna attend our next meeting is at EJ Brown, which will be our final selection of this summer tour. Shout out to Mr. Lacy that has us all here at 4:30, which is pushing me as a board member because it is a complete change from 5:30 to get here. So thanks, Mr. Lacy. Pursuant to section 121.22G2 of the Higher Revised Code, I move that this board go into executive session. This meeting is being held to consider the employment employee and dismissal of a public employee. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Dr. Goodwin, second by Mr. Lacy. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Treasurer, may we have a vote? Yes.
Mr. Lacy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Whit?
Yes.
Five yeses.